Okay, welcome to the October 7th. Regular meeting in town in Niqwa. First order of business is to approve the agenda. Be it resolved that we hereby approve the regular meeting agenda for October 7th, 2025, moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrot. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, and the minutes were sent out circulated. So be it resolved that we hereby approve the minutes of the regular meeting held September 16th and the special meeting held September 24th as circulated. Moved by Counselor Gerard, seconded by Counselor Lado. Any questions on the minutes? Not all in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, we've got a few minutes here before a presentation, so I'll ask if we've got any council reports. Deputy Mayor Parrot?
No, I just noticed that there's an awful lot of residents that are putting their leaves on the street, and I've been hearing comments, "Don't worry, the town will take care of it, the town will pick it up." I'm asking residents to take pride in the town of Niqwa, let the town staff do the work that needs to be done, and to collect your leaves, put it in bags, take it to the refuse without using the plastic left behind. Thank you.
Good point. Okay, anyone else? Counselor Clark?
Yeah, no, I attended the Niqwa District City Council meeting, the Yellowhead meeting on September 29th. They had a pretty successful High Life fund date. They also received a generous $35,000 donation from High Life. We've had a few issues with their pumps up there. They've had to rebuild some of their pumps up there, so they've had a pretty tough time with that early on. The positive thing is the ice in Hall rentals are full till the end of December. So that's good news. They also had a couple of events there. They had a volunteer fair that was held on September 16th in Hall. They also hosted a girls' hockey day, and it was very successful. They're a little tight on tax right now, but they do have their farming project coming in. There's a few other accounts receivables that they're waiting on. They did want me to make sure that I passed along that their AGM will be October 23rd at 7:00 PM up at the Yellowhead.
Good.
You can have a short one. This is just a reminder for everybody that What's the Big Idea is happening on Thursday next week. Our EDO, Mary Lynn Crew, is working with six businesses who will be pitching their business ideas, and it'll be at Legion. Everything starts at 9:00 AM.
Sorry, what was it, October 16th?
Yes.
Youth Choir?
Oh, yes.
I don't know enough.
Westman Youth Choir is coming to Niqwa on October 20th. They will be performing at the Niqwa United Anglican Church. It is at 7:30 PM. We're very, very excited to host them. Phil Ken is going to be providing them a delicious meal at ours before the concert. And I know the last time they came through, it was a real highlight that they got to have Phil Ken do a meal for them. So it will be a great show, and then actually the next day, they're performing at the high school as well, so.
And there's a few local singers.
Yes, I think.
Three or four.
Three. Three local singers, so, yeah. It's always neat to see the local kids performing there, so.
Yeah, excellent. Good. Thanks, Yvonne. Guess we have time for one more? Counselor Carson Jones?
September 26th, we had a headboard meeting. Everything's going really well. A few things that were mentioned at the meeting. They want to clarify the difference between social prescribing and social connecting, which is offered by hand, the social connecting. Social prescribing is a Prairie Mountain Health Initiative. We're a social worker at the Beautiful Plains Medical Clinic, maybe for a senior for specific services, like house cleaning or things like that. Where social connecting is a program which is more visitations, phone calls to a lone senior, it does not provide any services. So that is the difference. Speaking of the event at the Yellowhead Center, Michelle was at the booth for PMH in hand until 4:00. Unfortunately, there were no visitors to their booths, so no volunteers to sign up for that. Mature Driver presentation on September 22nd at 23:10. Pancake brunch fundraiser was very successful. The income was 770, expenses were 9351 after the co-op $150 donation, so it was a profit of 67649. The Fall Tea is coming up on Thursday, October 16th, from 2:00 to 4:00. And she asked her volunteers to make pies for a pie auction. I'm making lemon meringue. We'll see how that goes. Anything else that was brought forward was the fact of the increase in costs for the Yellowhead Center or the Yellowhead Meal Program. We have decided that at $11, it is, it's tight for them to add the $11. So we've decided to increase the cost to $12, but it's a six-month advance. We have to pay each six months' notice, so as of April 1st, 2026, the meals will go up to $12. Really, that's about all. Everything else is going really good. Next meeting is Friday, December 5th at 10:30 in the morning at the drop-in center.
Okay, thanks, Friday. Okay, I think we will move on to our presentation here, so I'm going to ask Counselor Lado to introduce our library ladies, and I'll ask you guys to move up to the two empty chairs up here. Join us at the table.
Yes, welcome. Hi, we have the pleasure of having our local library, Caitlin Henderson and Erica Martin, our WMRL executive director. So they have a, they've prepared a presentation to share with us tonight. Light bless the projector there. Well, it's nice to get here, being with the snow flies, that's for sure.
Thank you for having me. The driving was bad. But yeah, I'm Erica Martin, so I'm the director of library services for the Westmoreland Show Library, and Caitlin Henderson.
I'm Branch Supervisor. She's a real book owner. That would be nice. I don't think we go there.
Been in the hall for 14 months now.
Yeah, last July. Yeah. Forwards.
The hall.
So we're just in outline of what I may go over. I'll try not to sneak up too much into the time of the season, but I'll just sort of go over some of the benefits that you guys get from being part of the regional library system. Caitlin will touch on some of the local activities at your library, and then I'll just go over the 2026 budget that's been presented to our WMRL board so far. So just a little bit of background about the WMRL. We have six contributing municipalities. I've got them listed up there. The funding system, I'm sure you have made you aware, each of these municipalities contributes. We do it based on per capita. Then we also get funding matching from the province. We also do the membership fees. We use some fundraising, we apply for grants for special projects, so that builds up our budget, which right now is about 1.7 million. Our total population served over these three municipalities is just over 64,000. Niqwa's, as you know, 5,685 currently, or the past seven census data. I know it's wrong. That accounts for about 8.8% of our total population served. And when you look at our membership councils, we have just over 14,000 members total across our region, and Niqwa has 1,179, which is 8.4%. So you're tracking pretty close to what the, the amount when you look at the population as well. So some benefits of being part of the regional library. We share our resources, and that's a really big thing. When you think about what a lot of these things cost, our ILS, that's the system that we do all of our circulation through, keeps track of all of our patrons. That alone is about $25,000. So to be able to pool resources and be able to do that together makes a big deal. But keeping KOL audited, that's all centralized. Cataloging, collections, all of that is done through our main office in Brandon as well. So with collections, we share resources. We have, as you can see, our collections budget is 152,000. As of 2025, we had December 124,000 physical items in WMRL. All of these items are available to every person across the region. So whether you live in Niqwa, the book is in Hartney, we get it to you. We make a request, it gets brought to you. This is a lot easier when Canada Post is not on strike, but we're making it work.
And some lovely patrons.
Yes, patrons are helping. We'll probably call the board to help next week when we have our board meeting. We just did a networking event yesterday where a few of us met up, so we do swaps when we can, when, when we're in, it's postal strike, but we make it work. The Niqwa branch holds just over 18,000 items on its own, and those items, when they're in the branch, is owned by the branch, meaning that they can make decisions on it. So Caitlin can go through and decide if the items are circulating well to move it from the branch and put it in the bulk sale, things like that. But purchasing, cataloging, and processing are all done by regional staff. There's a lot of support within technology, so we use IT support company called Technology Soft. They're based on Brandon, but they have access to remote into any one of our computers. So if there's any issues at any of our branches, Niqwa included, they can jump onto the computer and help, help them out. They'll also travel out to search for installation of hardware, for repairs, anything like that. And then staffing, this is a really big one. We have quite a few staff, mostly at the main branch, but also in Niqwa, actually. One of the part-time staff members here is also a part-time regional staff member in our marketing and communications role. So Jules is currently working 15 hours per week, but as of January, that'll increase by another 7.7 in the regional role, and that benefits everyone across the board, because obviously you'll get the perk of her being able to take really great photos of your branch all the time, so, because she's close to it, but she does a lot of great designs too. It's a little dark, but later you can check out my t-shirt. She designed this adorable bookworm graphic for us, and some of the great graphics that we've been able to use for some of our marketing and portraits, stuff like that. But in general, budgeting is obviously done centrally, so itself, it can help both calcium and ore do that process. We get to benefit by doing a lot of professional development. We do a little staff professional development in June every year, so all staff come into Brandon and we do learning together. Caitlin was able to go to the Manitou Library Conference in May of this year, and just yesterday we were able to go to Manitou and attend a library networking event where there were librarians from across the province there. And then programming and outreach. Each branch does a lot of their own programming on their own, and Niqwa actually has a programming role. It's supposed to work 15 hours by week. We dedicate specifically to programming and outreach for the Niqwa area. In the summer, that actually increases this year probably a little over double in the hours over the summer, just to increase some of the programming over the summer months when kids are at school. And then we also have a regional position who's the manager of programming and community services, and he does things like plan off or tours that will come up to all of the branches, and he helps work with the supervisors to schedule when that kind of stuff can take place.
I didn't notice, that's a confession of mine. I'm sorry. So now I get to take over for a little bit, so we talk about our local branch, because it's been part of the region that's super helpful on many reasons that she wants it there. But we do have a little bit of our own personality. So in a picture sphere, we've got a few just of the library and what we've got going on. The bulletin board there might look a little complicated, but it's a high spy for the kids. And then displays, and we've got our little rock seat that lives out in the summertime that the kids get to decorate, and the corner by our fireplace we're setting up for a book club, so lots of fun things happening. Which, speaking of, what's happening in the library? You might see these around town. We put one out, we do a monthly one that's just an overview of everything that we've got going on in the library, and we've now started to branch out. We have two much, which is a good problem to have, that we have to start making some adapted posters, so we've got one that's not just for children's items that are happening, we've got for all ages and adults. We also modify all of these to be able to send to the schools as well, so that they can get little sheets that kids can take home, and we have those in branch as well. But yeah, lots of stuff on there. We post these to our social media and post them around town, and like I said, we at least make sure to have a monthly overview posted around town so that everyone can kind of see what we've got going on, because all of our programs are free and are open to anyone, whether you're part or not. That's an overview of some of the ones that we've got going on. And then I have a nice little collection of photos for, you might recognize some of the photos, but going to the top there, we were out at the Pride event, so we always, we set up a booth there, we have info, we had some cute crafts and coloring sheets that kids can do while they were sitting there, not just kids, some adults too. So we like to go out to events like that, so we can showcase what we have that's relevant to the event, because that one, we have a lot of themed books on display there, some info on some events that were coming up that might be of interest. So we like to pop up at community events like that. And so we've got a good relationship going with these school divisions. They're pretty good for promoting our events, but then also coming out to events. And that one there was one that, as Eric had mentioned, Alex, the programming coordinator for the region, he managed to get a few KDA in the options, and we had one that she had focus on science for kids, so she had her new book coming out, she was promoting that , and she was like, this was a how animals think, so we had a couple of classes from the elementary school come in to see her. And we also do some more abstract things you might not think of for libraries. So we do, we are part of the income tax program, so we are a drop-off place. We pick up and drop off your taxes. Supposed to be a free service to help with lower-income families, which we see a lot of traction during tax season for that one. We also have a new pass there, a free little library that's out at the campground. We run that during the summer, and that's, I'm sure you see a couple of the three little libraries around town. They're not all us, just not one is us, but people can grab books, they can leave books. It's a nice little way to connect to the library without actually having to step into it. I also got a little photo of all the cards that we got from the, one of the day camps this summer, begging for a tour, because that's something that we also offer for, anyway, they can arrange to come have a tour, and that was, we did here pretty much, later that day, they dropped off a whole stack of thank you cards and what they loved about the library. So you see, we kept quite a few, but a lot of them. That's a nice little collection. And again, as you keep firing there with his book that he donated to the library, and Jody made a bit of an event, uh, that he really wanted to feature the library, because he was big, loves libraries, was excited to donate that copy of the book to us. Like to have the local connections as well, which kind of hard to see from here on the street, but the Take-A-Brave School Team group, they just temporarily loaned us a display of their, their color wheel project that they did. They use our backroom space quite a lot, and they have just had a showcase at the Legion, and they had this project that the group did together, and they wanted to showcase it a little longer, so they let us keep it indefinitely for now, but nice little spark of color, because anyone wants to come see it, so they'll go to the library. And then we also have a help yourself basket right now. It's the end of harvest season. I know I personally, and a few other people are having a hard time keeping up with all the stuff that was growing in the yard, and so we actually offered an additional place. I know there's some other places in town to do it, but we made up a little basket of this extra produce that we had to give away, and really popular, people have been really excited to see what random things end up in there, and just wanted to make sure that that can go so easy. So this collection was, was to just show you just all the different ways that you might not think about libraries, and different reasons why people aren't using it. Which, speaking of, lots of books. So yes, we do have a good collection of books. Books are still a popular thing, no matter what you make online, but we also have audiobooks, music magazines, all of that is becoming a little bit more typical for libraries, but we are getting, we are adding to that, and we're having things like the, the Voo device there, the Omway Connect, that is an audiobook player. We've had requests for it now, because the access to physical audiobooks is becoming harder, because CD players are harder to find, especially in cars, or on your own, you have to find just by even. And audiobooks are expensive, so we've got this device where we can download from the Seela library, which has a ton of book options for us, and we can customize it for the patrons that we have. This is a new thing, so it's not officially on the shelf yet. We just got, we got two of them purchased by our local committee, so we'll have those up and running soon. But then we also have things like the radon testing kits. We even have a telescope that people can borrow, and we have the read prong kits, we have two of them, which are good for helping kids learn how to read. And then, it might seem odd, but I put the Monsters Scavenger in there, it'll lead into a bigger fashion of, what I'm saying more than those books, we're now actually becoming a more common third space for people. I don't know if anyone's familiar with the concept of third space, but it's basically your first space is home, your second space is either one of the school, depending on your age, and then a third place is just somewhere else to exist. Those are becoming harder to find for people, because most third spaces involve spending money, and everybody who's having money is tired these days. So we are seeing an increase in, not necessarily people coming in to borrow a certain book or to necessarily be photocopied, we still get lots of that, but we are finding that more and more people are just coming to exist in the library. So we'll have the parent who needs some quiet place to work, do the remote work, so they'll come set up their laptop at the library. We have the families that come in just to play, which that's why the Monsters Scavenger hunt is on there. Kids love that scavenger hunt, they look for it, they can't wait to, they'll do it repeatedly, even if they haven't moved where the monsters are in the building. They love to come and do that and just see what kind of games, like the iSpies, and stuff that they had, we have an iSpies table. We're even starting to get little toys and whatnot in our kids' section that kids can play with, and then we have like our art people, so we're having, especially for the kids, there's a lot of things for them to do while they're hanging out there, and we're even now seeing that the school-aged kids and the teenagers are starting to come hang out just because it's somewhere that they can just be, and not, again, no pressure to spend money, you don't have to panic about being around any place, it's not, well, because the weather's getting cold, it's not going to be outside, because that's going to be an issue for people. You can't, if you roll around on your bike as much anymore, you get cold. So we're having more and more people that are just coming to have a safe place to go, and so just without the pressure of spending money, you don't have to panic about where you are, you're at the library, safe place, and that's what we're seeing, a bit, a bit of an increase in.
Okay, now I will turn it back to less exciting, or maybe more exciting, depending on who you are. I'll go over our draft budget. So I have split this into three slides so that I don't kill your eyes. I made my mistake the first time I did a presentation at Brandon Council and had it on one slide, and everyone was just squinting to try and see. So the first part, I've just got our revenue piece laid out, and I'll just note that this budget has been shown to the WMRL board. We vote on it in November. Typically, I bring it to the board in October, but we were just so on top of things this summer that we had it ready for September, and we brought it a little bit early, so we have a little bit more time to mill over it and then discuss. And sometimes it's good, and I guess sometimes it's not. But this year, the increase, and I'm going to say I'm taking easy on people, that's what I said to the board, I had the increase from 1415 per capita to 1480. This works out to a 4.6% overall increase, and for Niqwa, that will mean an increase of $3,695 compared to what your contribution was last year. Comparatively, last year, we increased it a dollar, which was a 7.6% increase. As Caitlin noted, and I'm sure all of you are very well aware, everything is more expensive. We have increases on pretty much everything, our supplies, everything down to toilet paper, receipt print paper, books especially, has increased. So the cost of doing library business is going up, and even a 4.6% increase is kind of just staying at the status quo all the time, to be honest. At our networking event yesterday, Ken Curlew, who's the director of the Selkirk Library, they're a regional system as well, he's got a book to review municipalities surrounding that support the library, as well as the town of Selkirk. They had signed a three-year funding agreement with increases lotted in for each year, and the first was a 20% increase. So 4.6, I'm just going to say it, pretty good. Our levy at 1480 will still be quite a bit lower than the provincial average. In 2024, the provincial average was 1757, if you take Winnipeg out. It was 1802 if you include Winnipeg. So at that time, our levy was 1350, so over $4 less than the average for other rural Manitou libraries. So for expenses, this year, the only additional staff hours that we had were the 7.5 hours for the marketing and communications position that I mentioned. This will mean that Jules currently worked three days at the Niqwa Library, two days as their marketing role, so now she'll be three days in marketing and two days in Niqwa, and those hours that she was working in Niqwa will be replaced. So you won't lose any hours on your library to work, and we'll still have Jules two days a week, which is very important as well, because she's a fantastic library coordinator. We also will see a increase to collections. This is obviously really overdue. During COVID, the physical collections got slashed quite a bit as a cost-saving effort during that area, and earlier this year, the board and I worked really hard to complete our most recent strategic plan, and part of that was to set a goal to increase our collections by 1% each year, with the target of eventually getting to the recommendation from the province to have your total budget, your total collections budget being 15% of your total budget. Another goal was also to add that line on the bottom for our materials for non-book-circulating items, as Caitlin noted. This is an area that we're seeing a lot of interest, so this could be something like in, in Brandon, they have, they have passes to the sports shops, and that'd be a great thing in some of the communities to get, you know, paths that can get checked out at your, at your local library to try something out, and then maybe that convinces somebody to buy a pass to your pool or something like that. These are things that you can explore in partnership as well. It also goes towards things like board games, puzzles. A lot of these are really expensive for families, and to walk in and be able to take out some of these really expensive board games, like something like Wingspan is, I mean, probably about $80 for the game, so to be able to check that out at your library and see if you really like it before committing yourself, that's a really great opportunity. We see some moderate increases to programming, because this is an area that is just growing in libraries. Summer students, we've really struggled to get some of the summer grants through the province and the federal, the federal government, so I just added a little bit, because, say, last year, our Niqwa application was denied by Canada. um, for Canada summer grant, so then I want to have that backup of a summer student dollar so that I can still increase our programming here in Niqwa. Um, insurance increased because we had a fire, smoke damage at one of our libraries last year. Um, unfortunately, what was discovered when we had that was that only five of our libraries were covered under insurance, and we have six libraries. So now the insurance is a little bit higher because we need to insure all of our libraries. And then salary calculations are as close as we can get. We're about to enter negotiations, our contract is up at the end of this year, and we're going to start very soon, so um, I've tried to make my best predictions. But as you know, that can be hard when you're walking into negotiations. Um, so yeah, some of these points under these budget notes I went through. Um, I'll just note that I, I get that budgets are stretched everywhere. Um, they're stretched for me, they're stretched for you, I appreciate that. Um, I do feel that this is a moderate increase. Um, I understand that Niqwa is likely to see census increases, you have a lot of families moving in, you're growing um, a lot. Um, but when you have families moving in, this is the demographic that really needs the library and can really benefit from what we're offering them. And where else can you, can you go for three hours and not spend a penny um, out of your pocket for that afternoon? Um, they can take their kids to Lego Club, they can study on the back corner, they can read a book quietly, check um, check on some of their government documents that they need to on the computer, access their free wifi. Um, yeah, we, we offer programming, physical digital resources, affordable bookable spaces, uh, internet printing. It's also just a connection to the community, it's a, like Caitlin said, that third space is, it's a community living room. Um, so yeah, I would, I would just stress that this is something that when you have a lot more people moving in, it's more needed than ever. So I just want to say thank you so much for having us. Um, yeah, if you have any questions, we'll do my best.
I'm feeling so great now.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation, there's obviously a lot going on in our libraries. Uh, questions? Any council questions?
You know, if you could remind me and maybe elaborate, elaborate why we weren't able to access some summer students this summer?
Uh, it doesn't really tell us, but from my understanding is that there are a lot of applications in this area that come in for summer students from other areas, and so we like, just weren't the ones that were selected. Um, say the year before, when Niqwa, Niqwa hasn't been successful for the last two years. This year, Carberry wasn't successful either, but Carberry was the year previously, and Laurie and Debbie both did some digging around, and Laurie and Carberry found that there was only about two other people who had applied, whereas in Niqwa, there were multiple people who had applied, so, or organizations, so that's probably one of them. Um, we've been doing Canada summer jobs, but I think next year, we're going to try Green Team for Niqwa and see if that's more successful. Um, I don't know if you have any advice or know anything about that, but um, we found, we tried a Green Team application for the first time this year in Brandon, and it was approved, so um, we're gonna save Green Team for rural branches this year and see if we have more success with that.
Um, I think part of it, Jason's brought back some of our concerns, but I think, uh, like a concern of mine is we were elected to represent our taxpayers of Niqwa, and we want to make sure that the money that's going in is, is fairly done. It's, um, I've asked Jason to get some, some extra numbers, and I'm not saying that what you're doing is not fair, but it just seems that there's a lot of money going towards Brandon. Uh, rent-wise, it's thirty-three times what we get for rent here. Um, there's just, there's a few questions that I've asked, and Jason said that he'll bring it forward at the meeting to get some answers, but uh, um, yeah, it was, it's great that you came in and did a presentation.
Yeah. I mean, I can speak to some of that if you want. Ultimately, um, in two thousand twenty-five, the levy that we received from Niqwa was eighty thousand dollars, or just slightly above. Um, salaries alone in Niqwa are ninety thousand dollars. Um, we then have twelve thousand dollars in employment benefits, collections, um, would be eight point eight percent of collections would be just over eighteen thousand. Rent is six thousand, cleaning's two thousand, postage would be about two thousand, worker's comp would be about seven hundred and fifty. So your total basic expenses would be a hundred and thirty-five thousand right there. Um, if you consider that you would still get some Manitoba funding, your, your revenue would be about a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, so you'd have about nine thousand dollars left to do ILS, um, software, hardware, tech supplies, equipment, professional development, travel, marketing, auditing, and building expenses.
Yeah, and what's Brandon's?
What are Brandon's? Um, I have actually created an entire um, Excel sheet that I did share with Jason a couple of years ago. Um, and Brandon is the only municipality that can cover all of the expenses out of the regional system.
I, yeah, I'd like to see Brandon's again this year, if we're looking at increases. It just makes it very, very hard, as I know Jason brought up at the meeting, you know, we've got a hospital, we've got infrastructure. We're putting out a lot of money in our community. Yeah, it, we understand, or I understand, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I understand how important the library is and, and the relationship and the partnership in having all of this. Um, we just, or I just want to make sure that it's, it's equitable and fair across the region.
Yeah. I truly believe that it is, um, and I can, yeah, provide what Brandon is getting, but yeah, Brandon's contributions would be just under eighty percent of the financial contributions when it comes to the levy. Um, and then, yeah, I can do the rest of the breakdown of what the expenses would be.
Yeah, oh, great.
Okay, any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for covering.
So can you forward that spreadsheet to, to Colleen, our CEO, and she can circulate it amongst council, that'd be great?
Yes, I can update it because it was done a couple of years ago.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing on, any other council reports? Counselor Nando?
Just to get us on a different topic, we have a library. Lots, lots is going on with our, our, our library, so the first one I'll talk about is our regional library. As you've already seen, we have our budget that we're discussing, and the vote on it is in November, so it's coming up really quick. Uh, our collections, though, are going up one percent, and uh, the four point six percent increase is what's being drafted here as we seem to make. And you already seen the stats there, how we are paying a lot less than the average per capita in Manitoba. Uh, insurance expenses are going up, as we heard, and salaries, of course. And some of the additional staffing that we're seeing in the library is going right here into our local library. Uh, even if there's a regional role, such as like they mentioned Jules, she's the marketing, uh, the marketing director role, she's working out of Niqwa most of the time. She'll travel if she has to to the other libraries, so that kind of benefits us to have an extra resident here. Uh, and that goes up one more day a week, which is what it is, so we're going to discuss it more in our next meeting coming in the next weeks. Some stats that I know you're interested in hearing, in June, uh, Niqwa circulated one thousand four hundred and ninety-two items. In July, it jumped to two thousand one hundred and twenty-four items, so we're seeing a huge, a huge number increase in the summer, and in August, it, it went slightly lower at one thousand nine hundred and eleven items. So those are some stats just to show you some of the average circulation totals going out in our months at our library. Some tidbits for the Niqwa library, which I haven't got a chance to share, they came in recently. In June, we had over two hundred and, two hundred and ten students and staff visit the library. In July, the library is being used more as a workplace for a lot of people. It's a hangout, uh, and as she was saying, it's a third home. A place for families to gather and a place to check out books and use the public computers, which is really neat. One thing, uh, the other meeting I went to on September seventeenth was for Westlake Employment Skills and Services. Uh, we are looking at our, negotiating our latest contract with the provincial government, so TESS, and uh, we were able to sign our agreement right at the end of September, and we're continuing to lobby and, and look for further funding there uh, in order to help support our staff there with reasonable uh, salary increases in order to continue offering these good services that Westlake is able to provide in our Niqwa area. Uh, we had a local, just to change it up again, we had a local library meeting, and at that meeting, you'll see later on in our, in our agenda, where we have a resolution that's going to be brought forward or motion, and we, we, we found out that our library now, as you've seen in the picture there, has the new audiobook players, and that's for people, residents that don't have a smartphone, it has the book all on that device, so they can hook up to thousands and thousands of books that they're interested in. Uh, our front windows appear to be leaking, but I know Denny's already been on it, he's been looking at it in our library, the front windows. Uh, I don't know, is that some, that'll be something to, to check on to see if it's been able to be solved, just the leaking before it gets, causes damage to the building. Uh, we, we're looking as a LAC, a local library advisory committee, to do some uh, minimal renovations within our building, we, we're looking to possibly change the carpet in the back, and that's something that we're fully funding from our, our LAC board, the carpets, and put some paint on the walls, uh, some new paint, and to run some local ads in order to help promote all the good things happening in the library. That is everything for now.
Yeah, can I add to the library one? Uh, the Art West Traveling Art Gallery is coming to the Niqwa Library October twenty-seventh, I believe, and we have four local artists that are in that, uh, traveling gallery that'll be displayed at the art gallery. Or at, sorry, at the library.
I'm gonna have to get those dates off here, I get my, my phone here. That sounds awesome, yeah. No, there's a lot of great things happening.
Yeah, no, that's great. Okay, thanks a lot, guys. Uh, anyone else? If not, uh, manager of operations, Denny?
Uh, so what we're exactly, I believe, the second avenue of our zero renewal, uh, that was portioned between Hamilton Street and Mill Street. Uh, we found in our records, and when we excavated, we I think did find another surprise, but we had three lead renewals on that street, so three homes that had to be fully changed out. Uh, street work has been renewing, because we did a cut-down to restore the street, or if we don't see the evening, the failures that we've seen in the past years. Just unfortunately, we've just seen a lot of moisture and rain come in those holes, so it's been slowing our efforts down the construction process. We're waiting for our final test, uh, from the water to confirm that we can disconnect and then remove the boil water visor for that lock, uh, which we have two consecutive tests that passed, so. Once we do that, we'll remove the temps, and then, uh, those residents will hopefully be somewhat back to normal there. Um, Hamilton Street curb work, so this will be the Hamilton Street section from the hospital. Uh, that table on the Brian's, Rob Smith and son have completed tonne base work on the hill and leading up to it. So they've got curb board right now from Broadway all the way up to the Roundabout, and they just now have to do the hand forming portion, so they've got the approach that will be going north south towards between the hospital and the new school, and then they have, uh, a hospital entrance along with, and then once they do some articulation work at the Roundabout, we have to kind of coordinate the work so we can still let the insurance deal work at the hospital during the construction process, so it's kind of chicken and egg, back and forth. Then summer is fixed, so then we can flick their, their transition and their employees around. Uh, as we've all seen, highway sixteen paving is ongoing, it looks like they're starting second lift, so hopefully we can see the completion of that project shortly. Uh, profile paving completed, all the hydro utility cuts in town, and they've got their next contractor in town start working on the concrete repairs. Uh, that's to manage the hydro. Uh, our local contractor is still doing concrete repairs, so they spot repairs on curved gutters, sidewalks, uh, any replacements, anything to be done. Uh, we'll keep carrying forward that long. Uh, we contracted out the hot hole patching machine again, so we've also attached a hot patcher that arrived last week, and we carry on in some weather pending. We'll hopefully get as many of those piles filled as we can, focusing on the Mountain Avenue district and then working our way out from the, the collector streets after that. Staff also completed a number of water sewer renewals, uh, these last ones on Fourth Avenue, again, this was, uh, interior sewer that we filled with roots on the service line side, and then the water line was also a substandard size, so that one's all corrected. Uh, effective next week, we will start yard waste pickup. We've had a couple of heavy frost there, so now that all of these are really, start falling faster, the gardens are going to be cleaned up. Staff will be opening that up, and that will, again, be weather pending, so if you guys notice our blizzard, it stays. That's pretty much the yard waste cleanup, but if we get another two, three weeks of nice warm weather, we'll continue to clean up. Uh, me and Joe Owen, we're very busy with the project, uh, just ensuring that we can get some deficiencies corrected there. On going project, Project Three Twenty. Uh, EC lot shield is pretty much wrapped up, we've just gone off some talks, so they'll kind of dress that up, we'll get sheen, get some trees planted, and that'll stabilize those banks, we don't see any erosion happening then. All our seasonal sites are under water disconnection, and we're doing blowups for those lines, making sure we don't have any freezing, get everything ready. And finally, we had, uh, as part of our last revision, council approved a bridge inspection, so Tetra Tech was actually out, they did a preliminary inspection to report for that bridge inspection at Hamilton Street.
Okay, any questions, Denny? Not, thanks, Denny. Um, Katie, moving on. Uh, correspondence, Colleen?
Um, we have some information key informed from Annual Hardware, regarding the Niqwa Gas Transmission Project. It's basically, uh, the construction of a nineteen-kilometer, six-inch steel natural gas pipeline from an existing valve site located approximately twenty-two point five kilometers south of Niqwa. It will run nineteen kilometers north to another control structure located three and a half kilometers south of the town. And basically, they're just looking, uh, for any feedback that we may have regarding this, uh, project, and the intent of the project is to address natural gas capacity constraints in the region by connecting to their existing system. Um, so just looking if there's anybody in the neighborhood being a neighboring landowner, or the town being a larger urban center. Uh, if we have any feedback, they're doing some information sessions to share information regarding this project. The first session will be, uh, in person on Tuesday, October twenty-first, from five to eight at the library. And then there's two virtual sessions following that, one on Wednesday and one on Thursday of that same week, so uh, if anybody wanted to attend that, provide feedback, or whether the town has any feedback, I can send that in.
Okay, uh, that's it, correspondence. Okay, turning over to finance, uh, show the counselors has relieved, uh, received their July and August financial statements. Now, we'll have to approve them separately, but is there any questions on the July or August statements? Seeing none, we'll start with July, be it resolved that we approved the financial statement for the month of July ended July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Moved by Counselor Gerard, seconded by Counselor Nado, all in favor? Opposed, carried. In August, be it resolved that we approved the financial statement for the month ended August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Moved by Counselor Park, seconded by Counselor Sisley, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Uh, moving on to, uh, our accounts. Uh, so be it resolved that we approved the September twenty, twenty-five list of accounts totaling eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. As reviewed and representing EFT fourteen forty to fifteen eighty-four, and check two oh two five uh, triple zero six eight seven to two oh two five triple zero seven five four, but excluding check two oh two five triple zero seven one three. Moved by Counselor Moved by Councillor Costin Chuck, seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor, opposed, carried.
I'll excuse myself for this next item.
Okay, Councillor Herbert Gerard has excused himself for conflict. So the last check we have here is be it resolved that we approve check number 2025 triple 0713 for September 2025, the Home Hardware totaling $2,010.31. Moved by Councillor Costin Chuck, seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor, opposed, carried. Utility accounts, Colleen?
This is just your standard quarterly addition to the tax rule of 16 utility council that remain outstanding above $2,417.70.
Okay, questions? Whereas Section 252 of the Municipal Act authorizes a municipality to collect debts in the same manner as a tax may be collected or enforced under the act, whereas there are outstanding utility charges as well as outstanding account related to the cleanup of property in 2024, which remain unpaid and uncollectible, therefore be it resolved that we approve the following list of outstanding accounts to the tax rule, which are attached, moved by Councillor Gerard, seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor, opposed, carried. Tax sale, Colleen?
This is also an annual resolution. We have a tax sale coming up on October 28th. We currently have two properties still in the tax sale process. So we are required to look at what we would be wanting to set as a reserve bid, and that reserve bid generally being the amount of arrears and all costs to which a property be offered for sale based on a valid notice.
Okay, questions? Whereas pursuant to Section 372 of the Municipal Act, the municipality may set any terms and conditions for the sale of a property to be sold for taxes and may set a reserve bid in the amount of the tax arrears and costs in respect of the property. Therefore, be it resolved that the town in Ni'pua place a reserve bid on all properties to be offered for sale on October 28th, 2025, in the amount of tax arrears and costs subject to the conditions as outlined in the notice of public auction dated September 16th, 2025. Moved by Councillor Sisley, seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor, opposed, carried. New business, Colleen?
The first one is the Manitowoc Growth Renewal and Opportunities Grant, and we're looking for a resolution to support a funding application we submitted. So as we all know, as long as I've been here, we've talked about the bridge on Pearl Road, importance of it being built and creating a secondary access, whether it be agriculture, equipment, or just an alternate route should something happen to PTH 6D. Especially with our hospital being built now east of town, the connection becomes even more important. So in time, we've looked into the funding application. We found that the requirements for engineered proposals and preliminary designs are always going to be in the way or the first hurdle before getting any capital funding even appropriated. And although there is no guarantee we would get funding for this, we need to be shovel ready. So we're actually, our application this year is putting in for, to pursue a preliminary design and engineering on a bridge that could be installed on Pearl Road. Should we get to that point that we either can find the funding or can find an application that would be suitable to receive grant funding towards that project. So this particular money that we spend, we're looking, you know, it's not going to be a big, big amount, you know, a hundred or 200,000 to get the proposal done. And of course, 50% borne by the grant if we are successful.
Okay. Okay, the resolution, be it resolved that we support an application of the Manitowoc Growth Renewal and Opportunities for Municipalities program to pursue the preliminary design and engineering of a bridge to be installed on Pearl Road between Northeast 341415 and Southwest 21515, with 50% of the associated cost to be borne by the town in Ni'pua as part of the 2026 operating budget. Moved by Councillor Clark, seconded by Councillor Sisley. Any questions? All in favor, opposed, carried. Climate change, Colleen?
So this was about Global Leadership Climate Adaptation Plan. We're looking for a resolution of support from council to accept the consultant proposal. So this basically also is very similar to the last one, where we're trying to get a plan in place to premise an application for capital funding. This one more directly associated with the Federation of Community Municipalities. They require updated documents. While we currently have a local action climate plan, it does not speak to adaptation or addressing climate risks. So when we get our proposal updated and done, it's going to form the basis of the capital application to VSCM so that we can eventually pursue the installation of the fiber optic line between the water plant and our well. So that when we end up with these severe weather events that knock on our radio communication to our system, that we will not be privy to that anymore. So this is part of the idea being we're trying to address climate change. We're trying to adapt to what's going on with the weather events. And, but once again, we need the documents in place before we can make those formal applications. So we did look for different consultant groups that actually do this particular type of work. We only got the one bid in as of the date that the RFP closed, and it came from Inter Group. And so we're looking for support for basically a expenditure of $66,635.75, split 50-50 because the funding will cover 50% of that.
Any questions? Okay, be it resolved that we accept the proposal, Inter Group consultants to update the town's climate change, local action plan to integrate equipment and inclusive climate adoption planning at a cost of $66,635.75 plus GST. Moved by Councillor Nado, seconded by Councillor Costin Chuck. All in favor, opposed, carried. We have the capital, capital budget.
So the next one is a request collectively that came through the mantle of municipal administration association. But municipalities are actually looking for an avenue now to take on a challenge of some sort. And what's coming up is the fact that as of 2025, the Manitowoc Water Services Board received 346 individual project applications from 103 municipalities and water cooperatives excluding the city of Waukegan. The total estimated cost of all those project applications was $1.35 billion. That was the ask and the need in Manitowoc for projects of that kind. So based on the current annual capital budget, the Water Services Board has 24 million. It's 56 times the amount of money required to actually achieve all these projects. So in addition to that, the Water Services Board actually provides us a lot of financial and technical expertise to see us through and work through these projects. They have a lot of engineers on site. They have staff available. And the value of having the Water Services Board assist us on projects is, I can't speak enough about that. We just don't have that kind of staff on hand here. So the lobbying request is going to be to support a resolution that will collectively get, you know, compiled by a particular municipality that's heading this particular project and sent into the government to request that the annual budget for capital for Water Services Board be raised from 24 million to 100 million. And even in 100 million, it is an even hitting mark for the number of projects. But hopefully, when they see, you know, not just us fighting our own battle saying we need 1 million, when there's 103 wanting collectively 1.35 billion, maybe we will get a little better attention to having the Water Services Board budget increase. And we've been very fortunate with our projects with the Water Services Board. They know our needs, they know what we're going. We'll see if she's willing to support this, but again, the queue.
Yeah, no, certainly as a community, we have benefited a lot from there. Yeah, water is upfront in everybody's mind within the province. Okay, any questions of this? Whereas the vast majority of Manitowoc municipalities are in dire need of Manitowoc Water Services Board financial, professional, or related to subject matter expertise assistance for every aspect of water and wastewater projects and initiatives. And whereas the province, the provincial economy, municipal residential and commercial growth, community development opportunities, climate resilience, public health, and convergent federal or provincial programs are at serious risk of being postponed or canceled or suboptimally advanced due to the fact that the MWSB is critically oversubscribed with projects, which at the current funding level has seriously compromised the financial capability to complete even a fraction of the queued projects required to drive local prosperity, health, safety, and liability. Be it resolved that the council of the town in Ni'pua fully supports an immediate annual increase to the MWSB's capital budget beginning in 2026 to 100 million from its current 24 million. Moved by Councillor Sisley, seconded by Councillor Costin Chuck. All in favor, opposed, carried. Treatment plants.
So in 2014, Ni'pua was required to do an assessment of the building known as the water treatment plant to you because it's a public facility to examine whether there is asbestos containing materials in there and then inventory those and keep track and make sure that safety still is at the forefront of what we do there. There is no damage where there will be asbestos leaking into the environment. That assessment was done. It's now 2025, Workplace Health and Safety has actually returned further inspection of our public facilities, and they're requiring us to do another reassessment of that building to update that particular report. So we've asked the company that did it before, Pinchen, to give us a quote on that, $3,950. So if you're going to approve that resolution, we can get that done. It is a requirement for us to satisfy the inspection that we had with the Department of Labor. What's going to also come into play, though, is due to the changes in the regulations, this same reassessment to update the report and keep track and inventory if there is asbestos there has to be done annually. So while we will get the reassessment done and satisfy the Department of Labor because it has to be done, we're actually going to ask Pinchen when they're out. And we think we actually did some remediation and maybe we want to speak to it. We just can't find, because it's 2014, it's just before me. And if nobody else can find anything, we think we did some at that particular time. But even if we hadn't, let's just say, for example, it's, you know, that wrapping of Quodyrata Pike or whatever, we think we just need to proceed and in the year 2026, budget, anything that might be linked to asbestos is remediated because we don't need another bill every year to update this. So we're asking a resolution to support $3,950 to get this one done. And while the resolution doesn't speak to that, our next goal would be to see what needs to be done to make it go away.
Okay, any questions? Whereas in 2014, in accordance with workplace safety, health requirements, the town in Ni'pua completed an assessment of the water treatment plant to identify and inventory any building materials that may contain asbestos. Whereas Workplace Safety and Health is now requesting a formal reassessment of the treatment plant, which due to regulatory changes will need to be updated annually. Therefore, be it resolved that we accept the proposal of Pinchen Limited to complete a reassessment of asbestos-containing materials for the water treatment building located at 306 McGill Street at a cost of $3,950 plus taxes. Moved by Councillor Gerard, seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor, opposed, carried. And, oh, the library. What have we got there, Billy?
This is what Jason spoke to a little bit earlier, Councillor Nado, that we have another member that would like to, another citizens representative that would like to sit on this board. It's Miranda Labor, if you're willing to swap that.
Okay, any questions? Be it resolved, oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I can just share that Miranda, she's really got a passion and love for reading and writing. She's lived in our community of Ni'pua here since 2016. She's a regular patron of the library. You know, she actually used to run our writers group at the library, too. She's a writer with Glacier Media right now. So she's moved from her former job of a sudden. And she lives just down the road here. So we met her at our last library advisory committee meeting. And the LAC board agreed that she'd make a good fit. She is the last hole that we had in our board, so this is the last member to add now. And we'll have a full board. And you might have seen also, we shared with you tonight, I didn't mention it yet, but our committee created a manual that we shared with everyone here tonight. It's in here, it's online here. So just to see how we govern ourselves. And we're just a committee, we're not an official board, right? But this will be the last appointment, hopefully for some time, because now we filled our holes from our patrician that we had over the years.
Will she be having to go into Brown to attend meetings?
No.
Or is that solely local? Okay, I just, because, I mean, we currently spend a couple hundred dollars a month just in expenses to send members to W, to us through the regional library. So I, like, it's one of those ones as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so the resolution reads, be it resolved that we appoint Miranda Labor as citizens representative for the Ni'pua Library Board. Moved by...
You know, actually, can I, is this the time to make a friendly amendment to the resolution? It's before.
What kind of friendly?
Oh, it says as a citizens rep to the Ni'pua Library Board. Could it be to the local advisory committee?
Well, it's the same thing, technically.
Okay, as long as we see it as the same thing, it sounds good.
Okay, do you want to move that, Jason?
I would move that, yes, thank you.
Okay, moved by Jason, seconded by Councillor Costin Chuck. All in favor, opposed, carried. Okay, any other news before we adjourn? Seeing none, be it resolved that the council of town Ni'pua do now adjourn this meeting at 8:06 PM. Moved by Councillor Costin Chuck, seconded by Councillor Clark. All in favor, opposed, carried.